All right. Welcome to the June 10 Planning Commission meeting. We'll go ahead and get the meeting started here. Real quick, I'll just read off materials related to an item on this agenda submitted, and this is for the folks that may be out there on the phone or whatever. Submitted to the commission after distribution of the agenda packet are available for public inspection at City Hall during business hours. Such documents are also available in the city of UBS City's website at www.ubscity.net, subject to staff's availability to post the documents before the meeting. So they should be out there at this point, anyway. So we're calling the meeting to order, and if we could have a roll call.
Chairperson Eiler?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Here.
Commissioner Shannon?
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Ali?
She should be on the phone.
She should be on the phone.
Commissioner Ali?
Commissioner Ali?
Commissioner Adams?
Do you hear anything?
Is the green lights on?
Is the speaker on?
Yeah, I mean, it's on.
Do you want to text her?
Folks on the line, can you hear all this?
Is that?
Did she text you, so I don't need to?
Is that Commissioner Ali?
No, this was the attorney. Can you speak?
Okay.
See if...
Yes, the attorney can hear you.
The attorney can hear you.
Thank you, Seattle.
All right, so the phone's working.
Okay, so Commissioner Adams? On the line?
Commissioner Adams, are you there?
Time she rolls in, just a couple minutes late.
Okay. Commissioner Dasher?
Here.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead, and we do have a quorum, I believe, with two of us gone. We will go ahead and do the pledge, and Commissioner Schaefer, if you could lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their opinions. Do we have, at this point, do we have anyone online that wishes to speak, or do we have any cards from people requesting to speak on items that are not on the agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone on the line, other than the city attorney? Do we know?
So at some point, the applicants for both projects, for the Hampton Inn expansion and for the LDS temple, are going to be calling in, and then Daria was going to attempt to call in, so we'll see if that happens at some point.
Okay. All right. Given that, we'll go ahead and move on to our first item, which is approval of the minutes from the May 27 meeting. Any comments, corrections?
Do the chair need to make a correction?
Yes. Commissioner Dasher?
Page four, Reports of Actions of the Planning Commission, under my name, the first bullet point. The second to the last line, it starts to read Approved and Cleanup Ministerial Action Four, and my suggestion would be that all after that is deleted, and the phrase "Mr. Libby's Office at Sutter County" was approved. So it would read in total Approved and Cleanup Ministerial Action for Mr. Libby's Office at Sutter County was approved, period.
Okay, thank you. Any other corrections? Commissioner Shannon?
I move that we approve the minutes from the May 27, 2020 meeting.
I second it.
And I'll just add with the corrections.
With corrections as stated.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move on to the next item. So the first item, or the second item on our agenda, is the public meeting, consideration of a requested 18-month extension of time for a final map for tentative parcel TM 1704, which is...
I think we have a difference.
Do I have an old?
You got an old one?
You know what I do, because I was... One moment. My apologies, I was reading from the minutes, I think. Okay. So our next action is a public hearing for the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration on environmental assessment 20-03 and consideration of a development plan 20-02 to allow for consideration of 27,363 square feet, 50-room expansion for the Hampton Inn Suites. That sounds more like it.
It sounds more like it.
I presume we have a staff report?
We do, and so in a presentation here on the item, so good evening, commissioners, and so that item before you, as mentioned, is regarding the Hampton Inn and Suites expansion, proposed expansion project that we're going to consider a development plan and environmental assessment tonight. So the applicant for the project is Rebecca Newman with Eris Studio Architects out of the San Luis Obispo area. With this, there's a public hearing to approve development plan 20-02 to allow for construction of a 27,363-square-foot, three-story, 50-room expansion of the Hampton Inn and Suites, along with the facade modifications to the existing 88-room hotel. So the project location, it's 2.81 acres, is located 1375 Sun Suite Boulevard, just behind Chili's and In-N-Out, between Sun Suite Boulevard and In-N-Out Way. Currently vacant site, the existing Hampton Inn Suites is located on two parcels. The proposed expansion would be on the vacant parcel, and there's a separate parcel that the hotel are on, so with that, we would merge the parcels, the project would be required to merge the parcels. It's Zone C3 with a general plan, regional, commercial designation. So with the size of the development, with it being over 25,000 square feet, it triggers Plan Commission review for the development plan, and so with the development plan tonight, we're looking at this project for consistency with the general plan. Is the site adequate in size and shape to accommodate it? Are the streets adequate to carry the traffic generated by the project? Site design will complement neighboring facilities, and the project will not be detrimental to health, safety, and peace. The environmental study with the size of the project, there was an initial study environmental, initial study mitigated neg deck for the environmental analysis, assessment of the project, and through that, there was limited mitigation measures that were put in place are pretty standard from agencies, but we'll go through that here in a little bit. So here's a quick picture of the site with the location. The project is located north of Sun Suite Boulevard, west of Highway 99, and southeast of In-N-Out, as we talked. So with the proposed site plan, the applicant proposes the 27,000-square-feet, 50-room expansion on the north side of the existing building with facade improvements. The proposed hotel expansion is in the currently vacant lot. Design of the expansion will complement the exterior renovation of the existing hotel to present a single cohesive structure. So it's nice with it, they're not just adding on to it, they're going to go through and do the work, so it looks like it matches, like it was meant to be. So again, 27,363 square foot, three stories, 50 rooms, which will bring the total size up to 78,000 square feet, 138 guest rooms. And so, and with the planned expansion, the hotel will be open seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Just the aerial zoom in of the layout with the vacant site. Here's a look at the existing hotel. We're looking at it from Sun Suite Boulevard on top, and then from In-N-Out Way on the back. And so when you're looking at it, let me get this to work. So basically, we're looking at In-N-Out, this is where we're going to tie into it. And here's a rendering of what the proposed look is going to be, where they update the colors and bring it in to tie it in to match. So a few more renderings, looking at what the existing versus what the near new is going to be. The north elevation comparison of the existing facade, key construction materials will include stucco exterior, architectural detailing on the wall elements, and windows utilizing tones of gray and white with walnut accents. The facade upgrade in the existing hotel will be consistent with repainting, will consist of repainting the stucco and masonry exterior, places different entry features and stone veneer. So it looks pretty nice. What they've given us to this point, it looks pretty nice to be... This project came in before the COVID-19, and there was a push to get it done, and then with the COVID-19, there was an effort to hold back just because of the unknowns of the economic fallout from that and where things were going to be. And so the applicant decided to go ahead and proceed forward with the entitlement process, but as far as when the construction is going to occur, it is really dependent on the economy and how they move forward. And the applicant is, I believe, on the phone where they can help answer any questions regarding some of the specifics on that. So here's another few pictures with the renderings of what it's going to look like. Landscape plan, where they're basically having the, it's going to be with this modified kind of a courtyard where you pull in along that alley, that back alley behind Chili's, and then there'll be some back parking in here and entry into the building. So just existing adjacent uses to the north, you have regional commercial. To the east, you have regional, with existing restaurants. To the west, you have warehouses, and to the south, you have retail and restaurants. The proposed project does not conflict with any applicable land use. Plan, policy, or regulation of the agency with jurisdiction over the project. The proposed hotel expansion is a permitted use in the general commercial zone, so it's permitted under our general plan and our zoning ordinances is just due to the size that required the development plan review by the Plan Commission. And so one of the big things that I think when I see this, just because I've probably visited In-N-Out too many times and Chili's, is that the parking is always, you know, pretty, it's always a little dicey in the back with the angle and how the drive-through for In-N-Out impacts kind of that flow of traffic. And so with this expansion, they'll meet the parking, so they're going to build additional parking stalls with the improvement, but with that, they're going to have to share, what was it, 20? There's 27 spaces, so 27 spaces are going to be added when they do the construction. And then of that, there was a certain percentage, 91, 27, it was in the staff report, how many, was 29?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine are allowed to be shared, but there was a, it was a reduction. So when they did the, when they did the development originally, there was 49 spaces in here that were overparked that could be considered shared parking, and of that 49, there's a percentage, they're not going to use the total amount that is required, but they're going to use a portion of that amount with the shared parking. Additionally, we're not changing, not that we're advocating it, but there is street parking along the frontage here, and so there are, so between the overparking on the existing parking lot to the east and some street parking along In-N-Out, there is adequate parking to meet the zoning code. So following the preparation of the initial study pursuant to SEQA, it has been determined that there will not be a significant effect on the environment given adoption of the mitigated measures as detailed in the initial study. The mitigated neg deck, along with the mitigation monitoring reporting plan, has been prepared and included in the proposed project with the conditions of approval. So with that, I recommend that the Plan Commission conduct a public hearing and then adopt items 1 through 2, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is on the line for any specific questions.
I think before we ask our questions, if it's all right, maybe we can hear from the applicant, if they have anything to say, and then we can just ask questions of both.
Conference call wasn't connected to the meeting, we're just listening in on go-to meeting right now.
So I'm not sure, Ben, I know we had technical difficulty with Commissioner Ali. She actually called in on Commissioner Shannon's phone because she could hear but not speak, so I wonder if that might be the issue with the applicant.
Okay, Daria, I'm speaking.
I was on Shannon's phone, and I will say that several people dropped off from the call because on the number I was given to be able to speak, you couldn't speak. So several people dropped off as I was dropping off on that number.
Okay, thank you. At least we know this works.
Those listening? To avoid confusion, it sounds like there's a couple different numbers that were going out for the voice call-in, and so we're going to list the numbers, so any applicants that are on the line that would like to speak, we're going to list the number to call in for the teleconference.
Okay, the dial-in number is 1-866-730-7514, and the PIN is 663320.
Could you repeat that very slowly one more time?
Absolutely.
Did you get that, Daria?
Why don't we take a five-minute recess and give people a chance to call in? We'll reconvene at 6:25.
Yeah, I'm going to try that number on my other phone.
Okay. This is Rebecca Newman with Eris Studio Architects. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I hit mute and she still came on. Okay. The screen did go blank, but I can hear everyone, so I can try to walk through things if you can hear me. Thank you for your time this evening.
We're taking a five-minute recess just to allow people a chance to call in, so we'll reconvene at 6:25.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Can I be heard?
Who is that?
Daria, is that you? We can hear you, Daria. You're on.
Oh, hello. I couldn't hear anything leading up to this. In fact, all I have is the UBS City screen now.
Okay. There was a five-minute recess, and we'll be going back on in four minutes.
Perfect. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
We just need to zoom.
So is he going to turn the visual back on, or is it going to stay UBS City's screen? Okay.
My phone.
And then, then when they did the meeting, so remember what we went through?
So you found it on Facebook?
We should, everybody's using Zoom. Why are we not Zooming?
Thank you, Diana.
I'm going to call the session back to order. Just for clarification's sake, the phone line is for the applicants who are speaking. For the public, we have them on a webinar, and they, at any point, I guess realistically, we'll read it when we open up the public portion of the hearing, but they have the chance to write in on the webinar. So please, make your comments there, and the line is specifically for the applicant, and I believe Commissioner Ali as well is on that line. Is that correct? Or is she still on your?
Commissioner Ali, are you still here?
I am.
Okay. So also let the record reflect...
I can hear you, but I can't hear what's going on, really.
Okay. Also let the record reflect that Commissioner Ali is present at the meeting. And one more thing, anyone that is speaking?
Now I can.
We do get an echo if you have your computer on at the same time as you're speaking on the phone, so please mute your computer if that's, if you have both running at the same time. Okay, so with respect to that, we have the applicant on the line, and we'd like to give them a chance to make a brief or a comment about their presentation, or about their expansion, and then we'll go into questions from the commission. Is the applicant there?
Yes, good evening. This is Rebecca Newman with Eris Studio Architects. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
First, thank you for having us on this evening. We're very excited about this project, and so just to piggyback a little bit on the presentation that staff has given this evening, we are proposing the expansion of the existing Hampton Inn Suites with a 50-room addition to be built on the adjacent lot and the exterior renovation of the existing hotel. At the time that construction commences, both parts of the project will be done at the same time, so that there's not a phase where, you know, you've got the new expansion alongside the older hotel. Everything will be done together, so it's one cohesive unit. The materials we've chosen will bring a fresh, modern, clean look to the hotel and brighten it up as we've demonstrated in the renderings. With the site improvements, Ben had mentioned the parking agreement. I'd just like to note that there is an existing shared parking agreement that's already in place between the hotel and the adjacent parking lot with the Chili's and the In-N-Out, and after the construction of the expansion is completed, we will have 118 parking spaces on the site, and we will be, per our required parking, which is about 146 spaces, we will be needing approximately 28 of those on the adjacent parcel, of which there's 49 excess, so there would still be extra parking on that lot as part of the shared parking agreement. And that really kind of summarizes it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay. So from the Planning Commission, do we have questions either of staff or for the applicant? And I guess we can start with Commissioner Ali.
She dropped.
She dropped?
Yeah, she's not got, I'm texting her now, but she doesn't have.
Hi, I... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I don't have any questions at this time, Dale.
Okay, thank you. And we'll just go right down the line? Okay? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, I have a question. So I'm trying to understand the shared parking situation, because quite frankly, you know, with adding the units, additional rooms there, since it's already an existing hotel, it's been there for quite some time, the only issue I would have is making sure we have enough parking and that we're not taking parking away from In-N-Out or Chili's. That agreement, are there like 49 specific spaces that this hotel has identified as their portion of that shared parking, or can they just, how do you keep the residents that are staying in the hotel to only the 49 certain spaces you've got shared? How does that work?
So I'll defer to the applicant.
At this time, there are no specific parking spaces identified in the shared parking lot. They're open.
Okay. And does In-N-Out or Chili's have any issues with your plan to expand and need those spaces you're going to need over there? Have they represented themselves?
We have not received any comments.
What's that?
We have not received any comments about it.
Okay.
There doesn't seem to be any concern.
Perfect, okay. Thank you so much.
And staff did pull lead, and we had the same finding that it's a general use easement on the property.
Okay. Commissioner Shannon?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Dasher?
Just a slight concern about the private property access that goes between the public roadways. It's consistent with everything within planning. I just have a concern when it gets heavy at In-N-Out and it backs out onto that narrow access road that runs between In-N-Out, Chili's, and the Hampton Inn. Just a concern, but nothing that would hold us up.
So there's definitely staff discussion on that, and we're, through the conditions of approval with the project, we're having them designate crosswalks at the north and the alley, and then also keep clear for where the drive-through might back up and come out, just to kind of help channel anybody that might be parking on that side of the parking lot and then walking across, just to try to reinforce where they need to go and to look both ways before they cross, because it does act somewhat like a road with it getting busy in there.
Go ahead. Commissioner Shannon?
Most recently, because of the COVID thing and In-N-Out being so popular, they were routing their drive-through traffic from the main line, but it looped back around in towards the building, so they made a long queue that did not involve that main driveway. So they seemed to have been aware of their impact on that, and I would imagine that they would continue that. I don't know, but it... would continue that. I don't know, but it would make sense since they tried it and it worked, that they would do that.
Okay. And from my perspective, I had concerns also about parking since it seems like the only time I'm in that lot is on a Friday night or Saturday night and it's difficult to find parking anywhere. I think they may still get parking held over from the restaurant across the street and it's tight in there. And then In-N-Out definitely spills out onto, is it a Net Way, I believe? No.
Sun Suite.
Sun Suite. And although I was in Sacramento Monday night and I was driving down Madison off of 80 and their In-N-Out spills, queues up on Madison. So I thought, okay, well, at least we planned around that. So, but it's definitely tight. So nothing I would say to stop the project, but it's, if there's anything that can be done, it would, I'm sure it would be helpful. So not sure that we have any answers there.
I'd like to interject before we make a recommendation or discussions over is that with the development plan, there is also an additional finding that needs to be made regarding flood that meets the, based in the code, the application needs to satisfy at least one finding found in Title VI, Chapter 9 of our municipal code, which basically has to do if it's out of the flood zone. And this is in compliance with one of those findings for the flood. So I'd like to just, it wasn't mentioned in the staff report and I want to make sure it goes into our record that it's one of the findings for this project.
And at this point, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public? Is there anything, any comments to read from the public?
Not for this project at this time. Should we give them a few minutes?
I'll give them-
A minute or-
Sure, we can give them a minute.
Okay.
Chair, while we're waiting, may I be recognized? This is the city attorney.
Yes. Go ahead.
Just for the purposes of the Planning Commission, there is a mitigation measure 4.17.3A that deals with off-street, or street parking for all the vehicles and requires the adequate mitigation be required for all the parking. Additionally, there's a condition of approval number 17 for this particular application that requires them to provide the appropriate number of parking spots. And if for some reason they are unable to do so, they would not be in compliance with the code, with the condition of approval or the mitigation measure. But both of these items have been addressed in condition of approval 17 and mitigation measure 4.17.3.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, I think with that, the minute's up. Any comments?
No public comment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion from the Planning Commission? Any motions? Commissioner Shannon?
This is Commissioner Shannon. I move that we adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plans pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15070, Environmental Assessment EA 20-03. And I move that we approve the development plan DP 2002 to allow for the construction of a 27,363 square-foot three-story 50-room expansion of the Hampton Inn and Suites, along with facade modifications to the existing hotel. And Ben, was what you said, did that need to be included in a motion? Or?
With the findings for the, as stated by staff.
With the findings as stated by staff.
Okay, that's a long-winded first.
I'll second.
And we have a second? From, we have a second from Commissioner Ali. And all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'm going to take Commissioner Ali's aye to be late on the, as a proponent. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. With that, congratulations. You guys, you have your expansion. Okay. See if I can find the agenda again. All right, the next item that we have is a public hearing for consideration of the development plan DP 2001 and use permit to allow construction of a new church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Feather River Temple and meeting house. And with that, we'll move into our staff presentation.
All right, so up before you is in regards to Feather River LDS Temple. And so this project is exciting for Uba City. It's been in the works, it was a major announcement a year or two back regarding being designated as one of the few sites in California and the nation. And so over the last year and a half or so, there's been a lot of activity behind the scenes to get this project entitled and approved and the location and different various studies. And so recently, when you came in today, you might have seen the recent demolition work that's starting. They've just recently put in the security fence. They installed a full security fence and they put up some blocking, or some, they put up some shading or fence, you know, where they've added to the chain link fence basically to help keep, so you're not looking in visually to see what's going on behind there to help with the demolition. And so regarding this item, the item before you tonight is for a development plan 2001, use permit 2001, and environmental assessment 2002 is what's under consideration with the Planning Commission tonight. So the applicant is, please correct me if I stated it wrong, is Sam Net with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And we're considering a 41,884 square-foot temple with a 18,019 square-foot meeting house related, with related parking landscaping on the 9.4 acres where the existing meeting house and facilities will be removed. Project is located at 1470 Butehouse Road. Project sites 9.4 acres. There's technically two parcels there with the, one parcel being a small triangular-shaped parcel at the near Civic Center Boulevard where it's landscaped with the pine trees. So to assure the project will be compatible, so under the development plan review for the Planning Commission, again, we're similar. We're looking for these findings that, again, it's consistent with the general plan. It's adequate in size and shape. The streets are adequate to carry the traffic. The site design will complement the neighboring facilities. The project will not be detrimental to the health and safety. And then also we will add in that it's compliant with the flood criteria. With the use permit, it's in a CO, so commercial office zoning district. And in that zoning district, a church, a house of worship is allowed through an use permit. And so that facility has been there, the existing meeting house has been there since 1978, 79, and we could not find any record of a previous use permit. But there was building permits and different approval processes that were in place, but at that time, there might not been the necessity, the requirement for the use permit. And so currently, a use permit is required for that. And so through this review, we're looking at the use permit for the use and then also for the proposed heights with the buildings, with the main building exceeding the 52-foot threshold in the code, which is allowed through an use permit when we're looking at the overall height of the building and then also with the tower and the statue structure. Additionally, there is a flag. In our zoning ordinance, under the sign code, flags are set at a maximum of 25-foot tall. And so through that, we're looking, there's been a request that the flag be allowed to go to 35-foot tall. So that would be also considered in this use permit. So the project's located south of Butehouse Road, north of Poole Boulevard, east of Civic Center Boulevard. To the north, we have commercial multifamily. It's existing retail and office is what I have listed. It's some office buildings to the north there. To the east, we have the Uba City City Hall. To the west, we have, to the southwest, we have the police station. And then we also have some retail, various retail over here with the ride-out and then also the health complex that we've previously looked at. And to the south, we have the sports field and some various office buildings. There's proposed site plan. It's a little hard to see, but you can see where the main building is going to be on the eastern side of the lot with the meeting house over here onto the west, the southwest of the, on the property. There's a rendering of the proposed building, proposed temple, north and east elevations. Again, 41,480 square feet, contemporary design style with primary use of precast concrete, the exterior material, with use of series of tall, narrow stained glass windows on all of the building elevations with flat roof behind the parapet walls. The building height, the inside of the building is going to be 56 feet. Where the, where the tower, spire, depending on how it's defined, will add another 66 feet with the statue 13 feet for a total height of 135 feet. And so there were some questions today regarding just a reference for the height in Uba City. Is there anything, a similar height in Uba City? They kind of give that a, you know, basically something to compare to. And so with that, there's a police antenna tower at the, just directly southwest of it. So at the police department, there's an antenna right here that right now, if you look, you'll see coming on Butehouse Road, it's approximately 180 feet. And then you have, for general reference, the Pluma Street Water Tower to the bottom of the top cone is about 130 feet, 113? It is, is right there in that 113 range, 120 to the top of the cone. So kind of a reference is how tall the statue would be. Not to compare, to emphasize the architectural design of a water tower compared to the tower and a statue, but that's a reference as far as the height of it. So we have some renderings of the meeting house. So the meeting house is proposed at 18,484 square feet, contemporary design style with primary use of precast concrete, again, narrow stained glass windows on all the building elevations with a flat, well, and we have the, more of a standard roof structure line. And so we're at a building height of 26 inches, 26 feet, nine inches, with the spire going up to 39 feet additionally to a total height of 66 feet. Here's a proposed landscape plan. And so it's really well landscaped. And if you look at any of these sites at various parts of the country, they're all really well-maintained and landscaped. And so they understand our zoning ordinances regarding 50% shade requirements and the various elements to provide the landscaping buffers at different spots. And so this project is really well landscaped and meets our code. Staff has prepared an initial study pursuant to CEQA with a determination that there will not be a significant effect on the environment, given adoption of the mitigated measures as detailed in the initial study, mitigated negative declaration for the project and conditions of approval. Again, with the development plan, we're looking for those findings, that the proposal's consistent with the general plan, the size is adequate, the streets are adequate to carry the traffic, the design will complement neighboring facilities, the project will not be detrimental to the health, and adding that it's in compliance with flood ordinances. And so with that, regarding the use permit, the consideration tonight with that use permit is specifically for the allowed use in the CO district and then allowing the additional heights of the building and for the flagpole. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant, I believe, is online to answer any questions.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and have the applicant speak and then we'll ask our questions? Is the applicant there?
Jocelyn, are you online? I know she emailed that she was on the web.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sam was going to be on the line. Are you on the line, Sam?
It doesn't appear so.
Chad, are you, can you hear her too?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Do you want to talk a little bit about kind of the design of the temple and the site?
Sure. So, good evening. My name is Chad Brown. I represent the Richardson Design Partnership, who are the, the art of record for the temple project. I was the lead designer on the project. And as far as the project goes, we were excited to kind of be able to research some of the local architecture, some of the local historical architecture in and around Uba City and Marysville. And we were, we were excited to kind of take that language and kind of translate it into this beautiful church temple. We looked in and around the city of Chico, as well as Sacramento, as for inspiration. And we found, as well as Marysville and Uba City, we found a lot of beautiful buildings, one of which is the Marysville High School, which we thought was a really beautiful building. And we kind of drew some inspiration from things like Chief of State University, the Marysville High School, and the Memorial Auditorium in Sacramento. And so we came up with this precast design, which I think, precast is a great material for the area. It has a sort of, it has a, it has the right texture, I think, for a lot of the buildings in the area. We, as far as sort of other relationships, we really, we're excited about sort of the rich agricultural history there. And so in the stained glass, we did draw on the almond blossom. So that is one of the, one of the beautiful parts of the temple, the decorative parts of the temple. So it's been a real pleasure to kind of, to kind of relate this building back to the community. And hopefully, it kind of stands as a, you know, a beautiful place to worship as well as sort of a testament to the area and the industry and the history and the architecture. Are there any questions? I can, I can answer questions as far as the design goes.
Okay. Questions for staff or the applicant? We'll go ahead and start down here. Commissioner Dasher?
Yes, for the applicant. First of all, I liked the design very much. I think it's very appealing. My question is in reference to the cupola just below the finial. Is there easy access to that cupola on top of the building?
Yes, there'll be a roof hatch up to that area and ladders so you can get all the way to the top.
The first part of your comment, ma'am, I couldn't hear.
So there'll be a roof hatch that you can access and get up into the cupola, and then there'll be ladders all the way to the top.
Okay, the windows in the cupola, are they able to be opened or are they permanently closed?
They'll be closed. They won't be open.
Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you very much. And again, I believe this is a very nice design.
Commissioner Shannon?
Yes, this is for the applicant. I'm looking at the, our staff report, but I'm looking at the renderings. And there's one page where there's a beautiful white building that appears to be a stone finish that's probably- that's probably the precast, not sure, but below that, there is a nice red brick rendering. And in my recollection, the original LDS church was made of beautiful red brick when it was on Clark Avenue and B Street. And I'm just curious as to whether, to what the final, is it going to be white, and what finish is that going to be, or is it going to be red brick?
This is the meeting house that you're talking about?
The temple. And are the two separate buildings?
Temple will be...
Are the two separate buildings going to have different finishes?
It'll be a light, it'll be sort of a warm tone of precast concrete, so there's no brickwork shown on the temple itself. We did, we did notice that there was a lot of brickwork in the, in the origin, you know, in and around the area, and so that is why we chose the, the sort of the redder, more reddish brown sort of brick for the meeting house, to kind of complement the color of the temple, but, but to be different as well from the color, from the temple.
Okay, so they're, they're, they are going to have different finishes, one's going to be reddish brick, and the other one's going to be the creamy tone, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shannon, we do have a visual here too, and I should clarify that with, so the visual up before you is regarding the temple, and then we have the meeting house that is a separate building, separate architecture that he's describing.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Schaefer, so I have a couple of questions. Ben, can you put up the, a picture of the finished product of what's being proposed?
The temple?
There's a different one that shows blue sky with a cloud behind it, that we have in our packet, I'm just curious for that one, it might be helpful, see that one if you've got it.
You know, I don't, I don't believe I...
Put the other one up you had, that's fine. I, I'm trying to gauge height-wise, what this is going to look like, and I know we have other landmarks you're talking about using to gauge that, but I'm curious, the existing facility is easy to see, you drive by and you look at it, exactly where on that would the top of that existing facility hit, so I can see how much more height we're going to be having of, of monument?
I don't believe I have the existing height of the existing building. Jocelyn, do you have any information on the existing building height? I would assume with...
It would be, it would probably be just about the same as the new meeting house, I was just trying to look at the height of the spire.
And I'm referring to the temple, not the meeting house.
Well, you're wanting to understand...
How much higher you're going to go than what's standing there now?
How the temple relates to the existing building, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how much higher it's going to go from what's there now.
So, so right now, if these buildings are similar, about sixty-six feet, with the spire, similar meeting houses, but with the, with, with the temple, you're about in half, you know, so that, a building is about half of that one hundred and thirty-five foot.
Okay, so we're doubling what's there now, basically, in terms of height?
With the tower, cupola, statue.
Yeah, with everything, okay, okay. And then, I'm curious, this may have just been a coincidence, but I see that the new meeting facility is the same exact square footage as the old, are they just going to raise the old, which I know they are, and then just build on the foundation, a new one that looks, I mean, is there a reason why they're exactly the same, eighteen thousand nineteen square feet?
You know, I don't, I'm hoping I don't have a typo on there, but the location is definitely different. So the temple will be where the current facility is at, and then the new meeting house will be built back in the southwest corner.
It will be, so it's coincidence that they're, that the old one's going to be exactly the same size as the new one? Meeting house-wise?
The meeting house, Jocelyn, I'm trying to look through the staff report to confirm those numbers.
Right, it's, it's a coincidence, and they have a standard plan for this meeting house that they've used for a lot of years, so they are a similar size.
Okay, yeah, no problem. And then I'm just, I have two more questions, I'm just curious, was there a specific need to have to have that building height go to fifty-six instead of fifty-two, I mean, we're talking like four feet, in order to need that use permit? What was the reasoning, why that additional four feet is necessary?
Well, on staff's side, in three discussions...
The top of our structure for our roof ends up being at fifty-two feet, so in order to hide the roof a little bit, we raised that top parapet four feet.
Okay.
And it helps out with the proportions on the front of the building.
Okay, yeah, no problem. And then the last question will be the same thing for the flag, I mean, if our standard, what do you, what'd you call, twenty-five or twenty-eight, did you say, and they're asking for thirty-five, is there a reason for the additional seven or eight feet, does it just look nicer in front of that size of temple, to go a little higher, or is there a particular reason why they need that additional flag height?
So, through the core, through the correspondence with the applicant, that really proportionally and to get above the trees, our sign code was updated a couple of years back, and they set that in there for twenty-five feet, but really commercially, when you look around, the existing flagpole is thirty-five feet plus, City Hall's flagpole is above that twenty-five foot limit, and so the sign code really tightened up what the flagpoles can be without commissioner, commission review.
Okay.
And so that's why it's in.
Okay, that's all I've got, thank you.
All right, Vice Chair Blake?
Thank you, this is Commissioner Blake, I have no questions for applicant or staff, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ali?
I think my questions have already been addressed, but I do have some comments when it's the time for that, and thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or applicant? Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I believe we have some comments to be read.
We have two public comments. The first one is from Darren Gale, and his comment is related to item six. My name is Darren Gale, and I live at fourteen twenty-five Sherman Court in Yuba City. I support the project as proposed and hope the Planning Commission will approve the project as proposed. The temple for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints will be the eighth temple for the church in California. The proposed project will be the nicest building ever developed in the Yuba Sutter region, and will be an economic catalyst, both due to the construction and as a result of the temple serving members throughout Northern California. Once the temple is constructed, an open house will occur prior to its dedication, and I hope each of you will take the opportunity to tour the facility. Thank you. The second comment comes from Andrea, and I apologize if I don't say this correctly, Fetterspil Otelia, she says, I am an owner in the Broadmoor condos on Dustin Drive. We already have issues with not having enough guest parking and desperately needing the street parking. Would it be possible that there will be no parking overflow into the Dustin Drive area? Please, thank you.
Okay, so those two comments, I don't, Ben, did you want to address the parking?
So there is a segment in the traffic study, I believe, in the report, that addresses parking, and it has four hundred-plus sites, and the use, the time of use has been, they don't overlap, so for the Sunday meeting house, there's plenty of available parking, determined through that study, and then also for the temple activities during the week. And so, the applicant, he definitely, his questions have come up about parking before, and Jocelyn, please feel free to add to that about as far as what the demand for parking is during, during the week.
Right, so the meeting house will just be mainly used on Sunday, and then the temple will be used Tuesday through Saturday. So we've got three hundred parking stalls on the site, so that's above and beyond what you need for each building when they're in use.
Okay, any other public comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the public weighing in, online, a little unconventional there, but unconventional times, normally we'd have a few people, I'm sure, here in the audience, or quite a few. With respect to that, one comment that I forgot to make before, one question I had, we saw, heard everyone else's comments, and then I forgot to make mine. The question that I had was with respect to traffic, and Ben, you helped with that when you said that during the week is primarily when the temple is being used, and the applicant also said that, and then on Sunday primarily is when the meeting house is used. My, my question is, it sounds to me like parking, we've addressed that, but with respect to traffic, and when a large group gets out at the same time, and I'm not sure how that works with the temple, do they have meetings and everybody gets out at the same time, or is it a staggered visitation, but definitely with the meeting house, obviously, with services, I'm sure that they all get out pretty much at the same time. And right now, the concern that I have is the light, when you're headed south on Civic Center onto Highway twenty, and anybody going south is probably going to go that way if they're trying to get to ninety-nine, is an extremely long wait, no matter what time you hit that light, you're, it seems like you're sitting there forever, and especially if there's very little traffic, that, that light, I'm sure it's a Caltrans-controlled light because we're on a state highway, but is there anything that can be done with that or looked at, or is it, is it a concern even, or maybe the traffic study addressed that, so that's my question.
So, I'll add to it, and then I'll ask for the applicant to add to it a little bit regarding the time of day and the types of uses during the week for the temple. So, there was a traffic study prepared, and as part of the environmental assessment, no, it didn't exceed any of our thresholds for the, the level of services, that would be an issue. The, the site, I guess what I would say is that over the last year and a half, the traffic was a big concern for staff and for the city as how, how we facilitated that, and when they were looking at different locations to figure out where they would land for the facility, this was one of the better options, and staff really liked this one out of the options because of the proximity to the highways and the limited number of intersections it would affect versus being in the middle of town where you would have a lot of different traffic cutting through different areas. And so with this, you're really going to have the impact on Butte House, and you'll have, which is arterial, and then you'll have the impact on Highway twenty, then right to ninety-nine. And so, it was analyzed under, through a traffic study, it didn't meet any thresholds for additional mitigation on it, but Jocelyn, please, if you have anything to add regarding, just to give the commission an idea of what type of uses and the volume of those for the temple, that'd be helpful.
So, for the temple, there's groups that go in maybe every thirty minutes, about thirty people to fifty people, and they just cycle through the temple throughout the day, probably the evening times are a little bit more busy, but it's just smaller groups slowly cycling through the temple. There's not large groups that come all at once and leave all at once. There are weddings that take place, but the rooms that hold the weddings are smaller, they're, they only hold about fifty people, so again, it's not a huge amount of people coming all at once, and then weddings are just staggered throughout the day. And the meeting house, it'd be very similar to the use that's there right now, there'd be congregations that meet for two or three hours and then, and then leave, and then a new congregation would come in.
Great, okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Shannon?
This is Janice Shannon, I see that the, a total of four hundred and seven spaces are required to meet the requirements of the zoning code for the temple and the meeting house combined, and the applicant has proposed three hundred and one, and that would be I think that that's probably true, but in many cases, there are special events, anniversaries, just some kind of special celebrations where it may exceed that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a discrepancy of a hundred and six parking spaces. If those kind of events occur on a Saturday or Sunday, could the spillover utilize the courthouse or any of the parking spaces from the city, and even the parking back on Poole Boulevard versus anything on Butte House and, and in that area, it's going to have to be an educational process on the part of, of the applicant?
I just add to that, I want to make sure, so I apologize for the miscommunication regarding four hundred and three hundred, and so, four hundred, four hundred plus required, three hundred provided, but it was, it was analyzed, so that was the requirement if everything was going full blow at the same time. And so, in the, the parking code, through the city's municipal code, we actually encourage shared parking because we don't want to be in the business of building parking lots or overpark areas when we don't need to. And so, it was analyzed, we followed the analysis, and, and think with that meeting house volume, that there'll be plenty of, plenty of volume during the week for the temple, but, and then the, the meeting house is similar size. And so, Jocelyn, I don't know if you have any numbers on the existing parking to help give some insurance, but I'm sure that there will be times that all of a sudden Boy Scouts or some sort of activity in the future might have a major event, and with that, there's not any standard policy requirement or mitigation, it would just be overflow to street parking and where available. And so, there isn't, my understanding, any sort of restriction on the adjacent parking immediately around here that isn't marked.
Well, there's a concern for that residential area, you know, the commenter that spoke about Oni and Broadmoor, and that is kind of a side street and it's residential in nature, and I can see how that would be impacted by any large gathering in the neighborhood. And I don't, I would like to have some kind of assurance that that area would, you know, the, the parking would be preserved there, there's plenty of other on-street parking, you know, around the area, but to go into the residential areas, and that's not, that's not the only one, but that is a major concern.
You know, if there's a concern that wants to be memorialized, the Planning Commission does have the option to modify the conditions of approval to add a comment that, you know, if the applicant's agreeable to it, regarding a condition that overflow parking is not to be across Butte House Road in the residential area and is to be monitored, should a special occur to not, not be allowed. I don't know, Jocelyn, if you have any input on that, I don't, I don't know if you have any stats on how many special events that might occur that would cause such a use, but that might help add to it.
Yeah, there wouldn't be anything at the temple that would be a large gathering like that, it, it may be at the meeting house, but it would be a rare occasion that that would happen, when you have both buildings having events.
Well, the concern that I had, this is Janice Shannon again, is the fact that the commenter stated that when events occur now, that there's spillover. So, I'm, I'm just concerned, and I think that we could easily memorialize different areas just to protect the residential area. It just so happens that the residential area is close to the Butte House entry, so people are going to naturally park as close as they can to the front door.
Yeah, I just want to clarify on the comment from the public, from Andrea, that it, with her comment, she was concerned about existing parking in that area for guest parking, so it wasn't necessarily had to do with the impacts from the existing facility, she was just saying that parking is limited at their site now.
Thank you for that clarification.
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Blake?
Just for clarification, Ben, do we have anything else like that with existing faith-based facilities, for instance, St. Isidore's Church, a memorialize or whatever you're implicating to ensure, I just want to ensure fairness and consistency.
You know, the only thing that really comes to mind is the church, is the Crossroads Church down on Pluma Street where we have a lot of, where they have shared use agreements, where they're allowed to use different facilities that we've required them to use and provide... where they're allowed to use different facilities that we've required them to use and provide, the limit, the number, you know, so they're not using road right-of-way for parking. And so I don't know, Diana, if you have any, I'm not aware of anything where we specifically called it out.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission or questions?
I have a comment.
Sorry.
I have a comment.
Okay. We'll work our way around. Go ahead, Commissioner Ali.
Okay. My comment is perhaps we should consider what Ben just mentioned, is suggest that they get some shared parking agreements with some of the other facilities around there. Even where the refuge parking is would be available if there was an overflow event on a Saturday or Sunday. But then also, there's all the city and county. But my real comment is that, and I want to share that, I was able to go and tour the temple in Oakland last year. I believe most of the planning commissioners that were on at that time were at least offered that, and it was a real privilege, having grown up in the Bay Area and always seen that and not been able to go in, and then to have the opportunity to do that. It was always an outstanding building in the Bay Area, and this is, of course, a very different temple that's coming here, but it will be an outstanding building, and I really look forward to having it in our community. I feel like we're very fortunate to have been chosen, and I know that the work that will be done and the community of the Latter Day Saints will work to be positive influence in our community as they always have. I just, I'm not a Latter Day Saint, but I'm just very impressed with their construction and with the level of detail. I've never seen anything like it, so it's amazing.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Okay. Commissioner Blake?
I concur with Commissioner Ali about, well, first of all, the shared parking permit has a possibility rather than us putting any memorializations, or whatever you call them, into place. And I did want to state that my business address is right down in the refuge area, and I wanted to thank staff for the notification to all of the nearby residents and businesses concerning this agenda item.
Okay. And Commissioner Doster?
Jocelyn, this is Commissioner Doster. Can you hear me?
I can.
Just one comment, and again, it goes back to the cupola and the roof access. Nothing to be concerned about in any great detail. I've got some things that are exempt from the Brown Act for a public meeting relative to security and law enforcement purposes, and I'll discuss those with Mr. Moody, and maybe you could make contact with him in a few days or whatever and discuss it with him. It's not anything major at all. It concerns the height of that building and access that we've already spoken about. Can easily be addressed, but just to let you know that I'll leave him with some information that's exempt from a public meeting law.
Okay.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Schaefer?
I do. I have an additional question. This is more of a personal question. I lived actually right across the street when they built the temple in San Diego, and so I watched that go up from the beginning. And then they only had a certain period of time after it was open for the public to tour. Is that how this is going to be, where there's only like a three-week or five-week period? Is that how it is?
That's how it typically is. I think with this COVID-19, some of those plans are changing, but hopefully by the time this opens, it will be able to be open to the public, and as many people can go through as they'd like to.
Over just a certain period of time that'll end, or just you're going to keep it open for as long as people want to keep touring?
No. It will just be a certain amount of time, about a month.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I will just add to that, that I understand that the Oakland temple was just recently renovated, and there was an offer. I think we had a bus go down with a bunch of people from this area that looked at that, and the comments that I got back from the people that went, I talked to two people that went down there, they were just blown away with how impressed they were with that temple and the remodel down there, and they said if this is anything like that, even close, that it would just be, it's very inspiring for our area. And I too concur with Commissioner Ali's initial comments. I can't say enough good things about this project. I'm really looking forward to seeing it come out of the ground. Any other?
Thank you. We're glad to hear that. Chad and I both actually worked on the Oakland temple remodel, so that's nice to hear.
Any other questions? Any comments or motions? Commissioner Shannon?
Through the chair, if I may, please.
Yes. This is our city attorney.
Yes, it is. Just one quick question. One of the commissioners mentioned how our business was fairly close to the site, and I just wanted to confirm that the business is more than 500 feet away from the property line.
Yeah, so, please, Michelle, we probably did not catch that, Shannon, until just now, and so, but it's through the Sutter County?
Yes. The address is 1531 Suite A, Butte House Road.
Is it west of the refuge?
If you received a letter, it was within 500 feet, and so I believe we did send letters to everybody in the refuge.
From the vote?
I don't know, Shannon. It does, with her working for a local government or quasi-local government, is there a requirement to recuse herself?
So if it's, obviously, she doesn't own or a business owner, but she is getting, her employer is at that particular spot. If she is a, what I would call, a typical employee, she should be fine. However, if she is the equivalent of a manager or an owner of the business, or they're director or county supervisor or something, that would create an issue. Exactly what is your position?
Executive Director.
You know, out of abundance of caution, I would suggest recusing yourself for this particular item. I know that you probably want to vote on it based on your comments, but it would be safer if you could recuse yourself.
Thank you. I will recuse myself.
Okay. I know I've had to do it in the past, too, when there were things right next to my office down on Franklin, and I actually had quite a bit to say about that, and I couldn't say anything because I was sitting in that back room back there, shut away.
My apologies. I didn't even consider that there would be a conflict.
When you said that, I almost asked, and I thought, no, no, I'm sure you...
So, Michelle, Commissioner Blake, with that, we would ask you to...
Leave.
Leave to the back for the remainder of the item. Thank you.
Okay. We'll come back. Any further discussion or motion? Commissioner Shannon?
I would like to motion. I move that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration environmental assessment EA 2020, or, excuse me, correction, EA 2002. Approve the development plan DP 2001, subject to making the necessary findings as presented and the conditions of approval, and approve use permit UP 2001, approving the church use, allowing business heights to exceed 52 feet and the flagpole of 35 feet per municipal code 8-5.5604.
If I could interject with the findings for the flood, that satisfies at least one finding of Title VI, Chapter 9.
Okay. Amending, whatever, number two, to include the...
The flood finding.
Flood findings.
Okay. So we have a first, and...
I'll second, but before I second, I want to make sure of one clarification. So when that was read, the last condition there, she had mentioned about allowing business heights to exceed and actually be the building heights, does that matter in this, that specific word?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say that?
Okay. I just want to make sure that this isn't going to be a problem if we all approve it, and she did the business heights. Does that make a difference?
As presented in the staff report, and so building heights.
Okay. Yeah, I'll second that, then.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Commissioner Ali.
Commissioner Ali?
Was that a aye, Commissioner Ali?
It was an aye.
Okay. All right. Congratulations. You can move forward with the temple, and if someone could step back, and we'll have Commissioner Blake come back out. All right. Next item on the agenda. Believe that was it for... Still getting used to the binder. I do like the binders. I should have flagged this a little bit better. Okay. The last item is, or, well, the next item is Development Services Director Reports.
So a quick report with us meeting just a couple weeks ago, and so I just wanted to highlight, we recently received the use permit rezone application for Powermark Gas Station at Western Parkway and Highway 20. There's been a lot of preliminary talk about that over the years, and so we have received a new, and it's actually been considered in the past, and so this is a new owner. I believe the commission looked at it previously as Towermark, and now it's Powermark, and so that's coming before us that you'll see in the next couple months. SB 2 grant, so California recently awarded, the state HCD recently awarded the city $310,000 to help with our housing element and general plan update, and so over the next year, we'll be working through doing, basically not a full deep review of the entire plan, but a comprehensive update for the housing element to meet regional housing needs, and then also a cursory review for a lot of the different chapters to bring that up to date with various codes and changes that have happened, in addition to coordinating with the transportation element that Public Works is working through with a major update to its traffic model and handle VMT. So that's kind of exciting to bring some of our older plans now. 2004 was the last update, and surprisingly, time flies by, and so it's time for an update. And so additionally, there's a LEAP grant, so before the COVID-19, it was really housing crisis, homelessness and housing, and so through that, the state issued various funds to help with advanced planning, to help get to streamline housing, and so we're putting in for an application for $300,000 for non-competitive money to help finish with the update. We're hoping to update our municipal code and our zoning ordinance, so then that then matches our general plan updates. And so with that money, instead of being general fund money or some tight, some local money that's not as usable as far as the timing on it, we're getting a large chunk at once that we're hoping to make progress on that. And so also, I want to bring up the stipend for planning commissioners. So last meeting, Planning Commissioner Adams brought that up regarding the stipend, the $75 amount stipend, and so I looked into it. It looked like there's a city council resolution in 1990 that said $40, and then again, in the early 2000s, they upped it to $75. And so with that, it was a resolution by the city council, so any action to modify that or waive that would really have to be considered by city council, and it'd have to be agendized at their purview. And so, but with that, if anybody's interested in waiving it or deferring, if you send me an independent request, I'll look into that. But it's really at your individual discretion, and it's not at the planning commission decision level, it would be at the city council level for that. So I'd be happy to discuss the matter independently if needed. Future meetings and agendas, keep clicking it. So it was a busy month. You know, we haven't had three meetings in a row here. We've had the 27th, we're planning on this 24th meeting, and so what's been going on is there were some deadlines for July 1st with some new SEQA laws changing, so they're pushing some projects forward, and then also the extension of the Sutter Foods. With that, right now, the Sutter Foods project, the Perkins Ranch subdivision, there's been, they've asked to continue it, and so we're working through some options, and so most likely that's been noticed, and there's a potential for it to be canceled, but it's looking like we'll continue it till August, probably another 60 days, two months out. And then also with the Sutter Foods project, they're working through some of the particulars with costs and drainage, and so they don't know, I'm not sure if that'll be ready or not, but it's been noticed, it's been continued, and so we'll follow up with either a formal notice canceling it, but most likely we'll coordinate some sort of teleconference. If both items go forward, we'll be here. If they get continued, I'll have forwarding information coming up in the next week or two, that basically maybe we could do a telephone conference to have the meeting, and then basically continue those items, so we're not having to show up and just continue them. So stay tuned on that meeting. I just, for reference, I threw up August, based on the COVID-19 and the SEQA review periods, and for the tribe, there's been some delay in some of the timelines as far as the noticing on how that's working, and so there's a couple subdivisions, small subdivisions I talked about last time, the Super Ranch and East Sanborn Estates, and then with this Perkins Ranch subdivision being pushed, so August is starting to stack up to be a pretty busy month, and so July looks like it's clear. I'll keep you posted on the June 24th meeting, but we'll definitely have a meeting in August. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Ali? Hearing none? Okay. The next item on our agenda is Report of Actions of the Sutter County, I believe that's the Sutter County Planning Commission, it says of the planning commission.
Report of actions.
Oh, is our, Commissioner Shannon? Yes.
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting here, which again, I have to really thank Richard Doster for filling in for me because I just went totally blank. But the Sutter County Planning Commission has not had a meeting subsequent to that.
Any other discussion or items?
No.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.